Okay, we're gonna get started. Nina, please conduct roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. Mr. Badger?
Here.
Mrs. David?
Here.
Mrs. Di Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Frank?
Here.
Ms. Greenstein?
Here.
Mrs. Hayman?
Here.
Mr. Stoloff?
Here.
Mrs. Walsh? Mr. Antonio?
Here.
Eight present, one absent. Student Board Representatives. Jenna Berman?
Here.
Joel B. Ordeman?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Flag. United States of America. Public, Christian, One Nation, God, visible, pretty and just.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the May 28, 2019 Public Work Session of the Wissahicken School District's Board of Directors. I'd also like to mention that immediately prior to this meeting, we met in executive session to discuss personnel and legal matters. And with that, I'll move on to item two on our agenda, which is the list of meetings over the past month, and we'll be providing updates on some of them later in our agenda. Next up is item three, which is a list of upcoming meetings over the next month. And I want everyone to note that the previously scheduled meeting on June 10 has been canceled. Moving on to item four, we have a presentation. And we are going to be recognizing the retirement of two groups of folks this evening. The first group are actually two individuals sitting over to my right are student board reps. They look too young to be retiring, don't they? That's Jenna and Joel. And the two of them, Jenna and Joel, were the first group of student board reps, to be honest, that had to deal with the board's redefinition of the student board rep role. Two years ago, we did that definition and sort of shift in expectations of the student board rep. Prior to that, the role was, I would say, largely ceremonial. Student board reps would come in at the beginning of the meeting and right at the start, give a very brief update about what's happening in high school, and then leave. Probably 10 minutes, they were out of here. And with the redefinition, the brief update still remains, but what Jenna and Joel have been doing over the past two years is actually spending more time actually in the meetings themselves, at least the majority of the meeting time, listening, learning, and where appropriate, weighing in with their opinions and thoughts about what an issue, policy, or action that we were deliberating over as a board. And I remember back a few years ago where we at the board table would spend a lot of time arguing about what we thought students would think or feel about a certain policy decision or action that we were trying to decide over. And it always struck me as odd that we have student board reps, but we don't have a design for them to weigh in and inform us about what they think and what they believe their peers are thinking. So again, with that shift, again, there was more of a time commitment for them required to be more actively involved and engaged in the meeting. And Jenna and Joel took full advantage of that. There are many issues that had come up over the last couple of years that directly affected students and/or maybe controversial a bit. I think a plus-minus grading system comes to mind, whether or not we're gonna start school before or after Labor Day, things of that nature. And even though we as board members ultimately have to make the decision about which way we're going to go, it was always helpful to have a channel directly to the student voice and opinion, not just from our reps, but also from other peers at the school. So I want to thank you guys for weighing in and giving us your thoughtful opinions and thoughts on many of the matters that have come before us as a board. And I want to thank you for your service over the last two years. Now, I have some fancy plaques to hand you, but before I do that, I just wanted to say that I looked back at the essays that you guys wrote to apply to the student board rep role, and I noticed that Joel had expressed an interest at the time in government and learning how it works on a local level. So I hope that both of you and Jenna gained some of that knowledge and that it hasn't scared either of you off from pursuing something like this in the future. And speaking of future paths, I believe Jenna, you're going to be going to George Washington University next year, and Joel, you'll be going to the College of William &amp; Mary, right? So congratulations on that as well. That sounds exciting. So with that, I would like to give you these fancy plaques. So this one is presented to Jenna Berman for distinguished service to the Wissahicken Board of School Directors as a student board representative. And this one is for Joel for the same thing. Okay. Well, thanks, guys. Again, thanks for your service and exciting times for you in the future and your next stage of your academic journey. All right, with that, I'll move things on to Jim, or Kathy, for recognition of retiring staff member.
So beginning with our retirees from the Central Office Administration, I'd like to call on John McGowan. Sorry, I knew that was gonna happen.
Thank you, Mrs. Rossi. From the Technology Department, we have two retirees. First is Linda Capiello. Linda started with the district in 1996 in the role of a clerk typist. She then moved on to become the secretary to the business administrator. Linda's passion for spreadsheets, databases, and system software landed her in the role of systems administrator. In 2008, she switched and moved over to the Technology Department as the supervisor of administrative software, where she will happily have run her last state report. Linda will enjoy her grandchildren and traveling with her newfound time in retirement. She will be missed, but we wish her all the best. Second is Marie Molinari. Marie began her tenure with the district as a library clerk at Lower Gwinnett Elementary School in 1995, where she assisted students checking out their books for the next 14 years. In 2009, Marie decided she was ready for a change and became the Technology Director's Secretary, where she was the mortar that held the Technology Department bricks together for the following nine years. Marie is happily enjoying her retirement with trips to Florida and taking walks with her dog, Hoagie.
Congratulations to both Linda and Marie. At this time, I'd like to call upon Kelly High McCuskey, who will recognize Ann Miller. Ann, would you come forward?
There are many things that I could tell you about Ann, the supervisor, like how she's the department's Martha Stewart with her elegant serving dishes and her annual egg casseroles, or how she's the department's word sleuth or grammar guru. She's our very own personal human resource administrator, telling us that we need to go home to our families or complete a time card for the extra minutes past the contracted hours. She's our legal analyst who can articulate special education law better than any attorney we've ever had, or the department's French teacher giving us new words every so often, or how she's the department war accomplice reminding me every day to be nice to the people who come back to work the next day. Above all that, Ann is our glue to our special education family. Each day, Ann values the people in our department internally and externally. She values the work that everyone did. She respects and consistently points out everyone's talents and expertise. Ann generally cares about her special education family and did not have trouble letting us know it. She gave her undivided attention, and my multitask intention did not go over well with her. And we made sure that from time to time, we gathered together just to catch up and to check in on everyone's personal life. Ann was that glue that held us together. Bill, Ashley, Meredith, and Laura, we thank you for lending us your wife and your mother for 24 years. We are happy that we can return her in one piece, and we hope that you all get to spend a lot more time with her making beautiful memories. Ann, now, as a new matriarch of the special education family, and we'll never talk about age again, this is not goodbye for us, but a time to express our hopes for you. We hope that you have an amazing retirement and that you enjoy your new chapter in life. We hope that retirement holds new beginnings for you and your family. We hope that when your grandkids want a chance to play, you play with them. We hope that you continue to challenge yourself and become the better, best of what you are. We hope that you get a chance to inspire others as you have inspired us, and we hope that the footprints you left in our hearts will never fade. On behalf of your special education family, we wish you love and happiness in your new life's journey.
At this time, I ask Dr. Lupo to come forward to recognize those retirees from Blue Bell, and we'll start with Teresa Erhart. Teresa, if you could come forward.
I won't force you to wear it, but you can keep it if you want. Where do I begin with Terri? A beautiful, graceful lady who has spent her life working to prevent, assess, diagnose, treat speech, language, social communication, and cognitive communication for children. Terri, you've taught children how to communicate and express themselves to others, how to get their little thoughts out of their brains and into the world. You've also taught them how to take information in and to make sense of the world all around them. You've touched so many lives in your 20 years in this district, and you've made their lives so much better. Yet you're so quiet and behind the scenes. You would never take credit for anything that you've done, yet you deserve it for all you do and how incredibly positive the impact that you've had on hundreds of children. You never have a negative thing to say. You always look at the bright side. You always have an ear and a shoulder to cry on, which I have used many times. You have been a mentor, a friend, a colleague, and a professional for everyone in Blue Bell. We will miss you so dearly, but hope that you enjoy every second of retirement because you deserve it. Mr. Omahundro. You, I'm gonna make you put it on. Where do I start? In 2015, Billy Joel received an honorary degree from Stony Brook University. In his speech, he told the students, "If you are not doing what you love, you are wasting your time." I can tell you that Todd has never wasted his time. He loves music, and he loves children. He has spent every minute of every day trying to give the children a passion of learning in a way that was different, in a way that allowed children to express themselves with creativity, dancing, and feeling the music in their bones. Children who would not typically share in a classroom, who would sit quietly and never raise their hands, would beat on their drum and would echo, the sound would echo through the school. Children who didn't like school would get up early to come to school and sing as loud as they could or strum on a guitar. Todd helped those children find themselves, find their strength, their inner being, and most of all, their voice. I'm not really sure what we're gonna do without Todd at Blue Bell. What are we gonna do without our rock band, without our drum line? He is the heart and soul of our school. We just flat-out refuse to say goodbye. We're just not saying it. We are just gonna wait for you to come and visit us and play music for us. And Mrs. Shelton. Mrs. Shelton is not here this evening, but she is also fabulous. It takes a big heart to teach little minds, and Karen has a huge heart. In her 32 years here in the Wissahicken School District, Karen has taught first grade, second grade, and fourth grade. She has touched hundreds of lives in the most positive way. Karen has created lifelong learners, built the children's confidence, risen their self-esteem, and given them the tools that they need to become strong members of society. Karen helped the children handle their emotions, problem-solve, and be great friends. Every facet of education, from academics to social-emotional learning, was addressed in Karen's classroom every single day. But Karen didn't just care about what was inside the four walls of her classroom. She also cared about the Blue Bell staff and had a great school spirit. She participated in every spirit day, was an amazing colleague to her peers, and supported all of us whenever we needed a shoulder to lean on. We are losing a great part of our team with Karen's retirement, but we wish her all of the best.
At this time, we'd like to recognize the members of the Lower Gwinnett staff who are retiring, and Dr. Walsh is here to do the recognition, and we'll start with Mark Engi.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to honor and recognize Mr. Mark Engi this evening. Mark began his highly successful career here in Wissahicken in 1995. Mark inspired hundreds of students at the elementary level to do their best each day and persevere with learning how to play a band instrument. Their efforts and his support were hallmarks of his many concerts and wonderful performances where his students truly excelled. We always say that the elementary band program is the farm league for the secondary level, and as students progress through their middle school and high school levels, they can look back and thank Mark Engi for inspiring them to give 100%. On a personal level, Mark has also served our country in the Army for well over 20 years. Mark has a daughter and two sons and eight grandchildren, in which he's enjoying spending much time with them. He also knows a tremendous amount about homes. Mark has done many renovations on his own homes, Lake House, his son's home in Colmar, I pronounced it right, Colmar, Colmar, and most recently, his son's home in Alabama. His wife Debbie works with him and does fabulous interior decorating, and he has been prompted often about auditioning for their own HGTV show. Mark was always the consummate professional and was a pleasure to work with every day. And Mark was always genuinely kind and willing to help anyone in need. Mark, on behalf of the entire Lower Gwinnett community and the Wissahicken School District, best wishes to you as you continue your retirement, and please know you're always welcome to take the band, uptake the baton and center stage at any one of our concerts. Once again, we thank you for your service to our country and to our students.
Next to Stony Creek and Paul Assassin, we'll be recognizing our retirees, and we'll start with Leslie Salvini.
Good evening. Leslie has been teaching at Stony Creek for only three years. However, she's been teaching in Wissahicken for 28 years and is celebrating 29 years of her teaching career as she retires from this profession. That is above average, from what I heard earlier. Leslie's teachers say that she is the kindest teacher they know. Leslie has been known to provide necessities like clothes and shoes to students who are in need. Leslie brings a special energy and joy to her classroom every single day. She says she will miss all of her Wissahicken friends, sharing stories and experiences, and the everyday support personally and professionally. In retirement, Leslie is looking forward to traveling, visiting family in Cincinnati, and wherever her Navy pilot son is sent. She is also looking forward to spending time with her six grandchildren and reading all of the books on her long list of to-reads. We will miss her bright, smiling face at Stony Creek.
And I also have two retirees who are not here this evening. The first one is Ellen Dimm. She was the secretary to the principal at Stony Creek. And Ellen worked for the district since 1995. She has served as a substitute, a classroom aide, a clerk, a special education aide, and secretary to the principal at three Wissahicken schools. Ellen officially retired in December when she heard I would be coming in January. Her original plan was to retire in February, but she didn't want me to get to know her and then have to bring on someone new. How thoughtful was that? Par for the course, from what I've heard about Ellen. This is one of the amazing qualities that Ellen's colleagues share about her. Ellen loves gardening and traveling and will be able to do both in these things more in retirement. She will also be able to spend more time with her granddaughter. And then Linda Koss from Stony Creek is also retiring this year. She was a special education teacher with us. Linda has been at Stony Creek for four years. She has been teaching in Wissahicken for 28 years and is celebrating a total of 39 years of teaching. During this time, she has worked with students with all types of disabilities at the elementary and middle school levels. Her colleagues share that she is always an advocate for her students, is supportive of new teachers, and collaborative with her peers. During retirement, Linda is looking forward to spending quality time participating in four farmers' markets. She says the thing she will miss the most is the relationships that she has built with students over the years. Thank you.
Next, we'll be recognizing Letitia Blum, and that's Shady Grove Elementary School, and we will have Dr. Albany's making that recognition.
Leah Blum is retiring after 16 years of providing invaluable care to our students, staff, and even on occasion, the parent guarding her loved one who might have fallen during one of her family-friendly functions. That's true. Leah started her career in Wissahicken School District in 2003. She's served every elementary school over the years and even had a year at the middle school. She's caring, she's compassionate, she's a trusted friend and a genuine colleague. I believe that Leah is loved and respected by anyone that knows her. What an asset she's been, and she certainly will be missed. Here are a few things that an admiring friend and colleague, Nurse Andy Latanzi, thought was very important that we all know about Blum. So I'll shift between Leah and Blum, and when I say Blum, it's me. When I say Leah, it's Andy Latanzi, her trusted friend and colleague. Leah loves to lead. She will never tell you what to do, but she always will offer suggestions. Leah typically follows those, Latanzi typically follows those suggestions with a smile because she's not sure what would happen if she did not. Leah loves to keep all of us busy during the day. She's already telling Latanzi how things should be carried out for the 1920s school year, and she's not even going to be here. Leah's the social director, I didn't know this. Leah's the social director for the nurses. Four times a year, the nurses gather at her home for what they call therapy sessions, where apparently Leah is famous for her Jell-O concoctions and dance moves. Yes. Leah is a fabulous cook. Italian is her specialty, and she also speaks Italian. I love popping in the nurse's office and getting her going in Italian. Then I run out, and I don't know what she's saying. That's also true. Leah wears sneakers to work every day. Leah has stepped in some interesting things with those sneakers over the years while she was trying to support several students. Leah will be the first one in a hot tub. Leah loves to make ice packs but does not love organizing the clothing closet at Shady Grove. And Leah has an infectious laugh. So now, in my voice and Latanzi's, thank you, Blum. Best of luck to you in all that you do, most importantly, please enjoy your retirement and your family, because you deserve it.
Next, we'll be recognizing retirees from the Wissahicken High School, and Dr. Blair will be doing that recognition, and we'll start with Christine Brandt.
Good evening. Before we start with Chris, I want to congratulate my young retirees over there, too, Joel and Jenna. I'm gonna miss you guys very much. You've been fantastic. Chris will be missed. Her colleagues in the Science Department have had a look of panic on their face ever since she announced she was retiring. I think one may have even called her the Mother Hen. I have worked closely with Chris as the Science Department Chair over the past four years. She's been a strong advocate for her colleagues, her students, and the science program at the high school. She puts her whole heart into every interaction she has with her students and colleagues, and she immediately makes you feel valued and heard. On many occasions, Chris has been my Wiss history go-to person. She's helped me to get a pulse on the building's culture and the history of things before I got there. Though I have spent the last few months or so asking Chris if she changed her mind, true story, I know she's going to bring the same level of excitement and joy to her retirement as she has brought to her career. If you're looking for her, you will probably find her underwater scuba diving. Chris is a world traveler, and I know that she and her husband already have their upcoming trips planned. She told me this is what she is most looking forward to in her retirement. I know her retirement is gonna be jammed with memory-making and cooking-making with the people who are most important to her. Chris, congratulations. I and many others are greatly going to miss you. Carol? Carol got the news that her last year in Wissahicken as a classroom assistant in the district would be at the high school, and that was a news change for her and probably very scary. I hope that Carol has enjoyed her experience at the high school as much as we have enjoyed having her. If she didn't enjoy it, she hid it very well, because there has never been one day when Carol was not smiling. She is friendly, warm, and kind. Her work at the high school was consistently excellent. We wish her the best in her retirement. I know she is very much looking forward to spending quality time with her family. Congratulations, Carol. We have a few retirees who could not join us this evening. Mary Claire Basilega. Mary Claire also ended her career at Wissahicken at the high school for the first time this year. She started working at the high school as a classroom assistant, and we are very grateful that we had a chance to get to know her during her final lap around the track. Spending years with smaller students, I can imagine that a move to the high school may have been very overwhelming and, dare I say, scary for her. Mary Claire threw herself into the work at the high school right from day one. Before the year kicked off, she met with me and shared that she was optimistic and excited for the new challenges and experiences. In a short time, she worked to get to know our students, our teachers, and our school community. What impressed me the most is Mary Claire's kindness. She donated an incredible amount of support to our breakfast initiative at the high school because she has a genuine passion for giving back and helping others. At Wissahicken, we continue to emphasize the importance of paying it forward, and Mary Claire's compassion was a great fit for her as her last year at the high school. We wish her the best. Chuck Edder is also retiring. He's a social studies teacher at the high school. We will miss seeing Chuck greeting his students outside of his classroom in El Hall, and we secretly always appreciated that he also was an extra set of eyes and ears in the infamous knuckle, because that is where his classroom is located. Through his work as a social studies teacher, he has inspired curiosity in his students and has consistently strived to build a sense of civic responsibility and global awareness. Chuck also served as a building representative for the WEA, and I worked closely with him over the past years in that role. Chuck was an advocate for his colleagues, a good communicator, and a positive and fair member of the Wissahicken High School community. and a positive and fair member of the Wissahicken High School community. Chuck is a proud son, husband, father, and grandfather. Though he is a very private person, he beams when he talks about his family. I have no doubt that he is going to spend a lot of time in his retirement with his life MVPs. Congratulations and best wishes to Chuck. I hope to see him at Kids Castle in Doylestown with his granddaughter, and I know he is looking most forward to cycling trips with his wife. Brett Hyatt is a math teacher at the high school. If you were gonna play the word association game and someone said Brett Hyatt, I can almost guarantee you that the most common word said next would be guitar. Brett and his guitar are a fixture at WHS. His love of music was clear through his work with the School of Rock and through his karaoke Wissahicken. He can put us all to shame. More than his musical talents, what I love about Brett is his heart. He is one of the kindest and most genuine individuals I have ever worked with. He uses his past obstacles to help students build their own sense of resilience and confidence. He believes in every student's potential, and nothing stops him in trying to help them find it. Brett's energy is contagious, and his excitement is infectious. I'm pretty confident in saying that I don't think Brett has ever had a bad day in his life. Brett has shared with me that what he will miss most when leaving WIS is his colleagues. In truth, it is Brett's colleagues who are going to sorely miss him. Brett is truly one of a kind. Colorado and the mountain view from his deck are awaiting him, but we won't be the same without him. I'm just gonna keep going. Everyone from the high school is retiring. It seems like way. Kathy McGonigal is a graphics art teacher at the high school. If you've ever had a conversation with Kathy, I guarantee that you walked away from that conversation saying to yourself, "That woman is the nicest person in the world." There is something about Kathy that puts you at ease. She personifies compassion and kindness. Kathy's colleagues look to her because she's steady, always. In addition to her great work in our art department, Kathy worked with our students to create an awesome yearbook in recent years, as well as worked as a faculty liaison for our partnership program with Eli Lilly. Our students appreciate her creativity, but more importantly, they appreciate her genuine interest in them and her confidence in them. In recent years, the district has prioritized a focus on narrowing the achievement gap, and Kathy has modeled leadership and passion for this. She believes in every student, and she consistently roots for the underdog. She is a strong student advocate, and I love that about her. Working with Kathy has been a real pleasure. She makes my life as principal a thousand times easier. We are all very lucky that she decided to change her career from nursing years ago because she's given so much to the field of education. I know Kathy is looking forward to spending time with her family, and I wish her great happiness as she spends her mornings making pottery on her deck. Her legacy will continue because she's made countless contributions to our school community. Thank you.
And lastly, we'll be recognizing retirees from the middle school. And Beth Bauer is here to do the recognition, and we'll start with Amy Hansen.
Okay. So, it's my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Amy Hansen. Amy is a very familiar face here in the Wissahicken School District as Amy attended the former Wissahicken High School in Ambler and graduated in 1971. Prior to Amy coming back to WIS as an employee, she held various jobs, including spending seven years working in the emergency room at Warminster General Hospital. All those years in the ER prepared her for her job as an athletic nurse at Wissahicken Middle School. Amy has been in this position for the last eight years. During this time, Amy's been an advocate for student athletes. She worked very closely with students and coaches, and the safety of the athletes was always Amy's priority. Amy would meet with sport teams at the start of the season to promote healthy eating and training. During sporting events, Amy would treat all student athletes the same, regardless of whether they were WIS athletes or students from the opposing schools. In addition to Amy working with student athletes and coaches, Amy also worked in the nurse's office at Wissahicken Middle School. Amy worked very closely with the other nurse to provide the best care for our students. Amy genuinely cared about each and every student with whom she came in contact, and she always took the time to listen to students' concerns. Amy also took every opportunity to speak with sixth graders as they came into the office about potential interest in joining sports teams as seventh and eighth graders. Amy was one of our biggest recruiters for athletics. One thing I know Amy will miss about working at Wissahicken is driving the golf cart after school. Amy quickly became a master of the cart, figuring out the maximum speed it could travel, safely, of course. I understand that our faculty manager, Gus Baldassano, got her a bike horn so that she could warn innocent bystanders that she was coming. Amy is an extremely positive person, and her joyful energy permeated throughout the nurse's office, on the athletic fields, and throughout Wissahicken Middle School. Although Amy will be greatly missed at WMS, I know Amy will enjoy spending time with her husband and her new grandson Huck. I also hope that Amy is able to complete the cabin renovation project at Lake Nakamixon, and she will spend a lot of time there on the sailboat. Amy, thank you for your years of dedication to students and staff at Wissahicken Middle School. I wish you all the very best in retirement. I'm pleased to recognize our next Wissahicken retiree, Kathleen Hawke. Kathleen has spent many years teaching Spanish to students here in the Wissahicken School District, as well as other surrounding schools. Kathleen's a graduate of St. Joe's University, where she received her bachelor's degree, and LaSalle University, where she earned her master's degree. Kathleen began her teaching career in the school district of Philadelphia in 1985. After spending four years in the Philadelphia School District, Kathleen moved on to teach Spanish at Norwood Fontbonne Academy, where she taught for another four years. Kathleen made her way to Wissahicken School District in 1993, and she has spent the last 26 years of her career teaching Spanish to literally thousands of students. Kathleen always held her students to high standards, and she took her job in the classroom very seriously. In addition to Kathleen's work with students of the Wissahicken School District, Kathleen also spent time supporting her colleagues across the district. Kathleen served as president of the Wissahicken Educational Association. In speaking with some of Kathleen's colleagues, people said things like, "Kathleen was always very helpful, and you felt like she had your back when it came to school issues." Another person said, "Kathleen thought about others and would help staff members complete forms and acknowledge the custodial staff with holiday hoagie lunches." Family is very important to Kathleen, and she's spent time taking care of those people closest to her. I know that Kathleen will find plenty of things to keep her busy during retirement, including being with family and going to the beach. Kathleen, I wish you good health and happiness during your retirement.
Again, we congratulate all of our retirees. And at this time, if you wouldn't mind standing, it'd be recognized one last time. And thank you for being here this evening.
Okay. Again, thanks to all our retirees. And I think they're getting an early jump on retirement now. Feel free to leave their meeting, and we'll continue on with our agenda. So the next item on our agenda is public comment. And this is the first of two public comment periods that we will have tonight. And this one is for comments on agenda items only. And I know we have several speakers who are registered, but I don't believe any of them are speaking on agenda items. So they will be speaking at our second comment period later. Then with that, I'll move on to the report of the board president. And for voting next week, there are actually nine items that are on the list underneath Board President. And I'm gonna go through each of them. There's quite a few tonight. Items one, two, and three are related to our budget for next fiscal year. And you guys recall, the preliminary final budget was approved last month on April 29th. And what we have for us tonight, and we'll vote on next week, is the final, final one. And Wade, that has not changed from the preliminary final that we approved on April 29th, has it?
There are two changes. One is we received the homestead money, which essentially comes from the state, and we use that to reduce the revenue that is needed by local taxpayers. So it's net neutral for us. And the other impact is that we recognize the library's debt. So the debt increased, and then we are also receiving an offsetting amount from the library. So both are net zero, but those are both changes.
So Wade, can you recap for us with the final budget that we'll approve next week? That includes what percentage tax increase?
It's a 2.85% tax increase.
Which I believe translates into a $118 increase to the median household in Wissahicken. And with that modest increase, what I will say is that we will preserve the high-quality education that our community expects and we know our children deserve. We will add teachers to accommodate enrollment growth, and we will continue our multi-year strategy to rebuild the district's ability to deal with our aging school buildings as well as increase elementary school capacity. And all of that for what in essence amounts to less than $10 a month of an increase to the median household. So I want to thank you, the administration, as well as my fellow board members for all the extra meetings, the deliberations, and tough decisions that resulted in this budget, which I believe in the end strikes a good, reasonable balance between tax burden and high-quality schools. So, any questions or comments about items one, two, or three? No? Okay. Item four is for approval of the library budget for next fiscal year. And that includes also a small increase to the library's overall operating. And then items five through nine authorize Wade or the administration to basically pay bills, solicit vendor bids, execute budget transfers, and approve change orders under $10,000 when it's advantageous for them to act quickly and prior to formal board approval. But all of these actions would come before us at the next voting meeting to ratify via vote after. And just as a reminder, typically, the board has to approve any action that the administration takes in terms of paying bills or financial obligations prior to them actually doing it. But again, in the execution and implementation of the school year and the budget, there may be times where they could take advantage of early payment terms or some other favorable things by acting quickly. But you will always have those actions come before us at the next voting meeting to officially ratify via vote. Any questions or comments about items four, nine? No? Okay. So then we'll move on to the report of the superintendent, Jim.
Okay, thank you. No informational items tonight. I do have two items that will be up for a vote at next meeting. The first is a new or successor employment agreement, a really individual contract with Mr. Abmont. Happy to report he is re-enlisting for another term of service. And the second is amendment number one to Ms. Rossi's existing employment agreement for the ensuing school year.
Okay. Questions, comments on the contracts? Okay, moving on then to the report of the Assistant Superintendent, Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. I just want to report out on Tuesday, May 21st, we had our professional development day. On the heels of that, I do want to share with you the wonderful presentation by Mr. Tom Murray, who spoke to our faculty as one of the keynote speakers, as the keynote speaker, focused on future 21st century learning. He had a very important message, I think, that reminded us of the importance of relationships and relationships with our students. And in addition to that, the importance of recognizing the adaptive adaptations we need to think about as we approach students in the 21st century and how we instruct and how we teach. So things that are rooted in good relationships haven't changed, but some of our strategies and our approaches to teaching certainly have and need to as we continue to evolve. Also, that program was under the direction of Ms. Jennifer Schmidt, who did a really nice job of planning that along with her instructional coaches. And I also want to compliment Dr. Heim McCloskey for doing an excellent session on the morning of the 21st focused on special education and best practices. An awesome presentation and good work with her students, with her faculty and team. So just kudos to all of them on the good planning they did that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the report of the solicitor, Beth.
I have no report. I don't think there is any items that are listed for action on Monday.
Okay. The report of the board secretary, Wade.
We have three items up for meeting-minute approval, which are the facilities meeting, the last work session, and the last public board meeting.
Okay. Please continue with the report of the board treasurer.
Thank you. The next meeting, we would ask for approval of the treasurer's report for April 30th, 2019.
Thank you. Moving on now then to board committee reports. Communications, Ronnie.
There are no items to discuss.
One thing I just wanted to mention related to communications is the fact that the district currently has a parent satisfaction survey that has been open for, I think, most of the month of May. But the deadline is coming up to submit responses to that survey, I believe, Saturday, June 1st. So it's a great opportunity for parents in our community to provide the board and the administration with direct feedback about their children's experiences in our schools. And we will tabulate all those results and analyze that, looking for trends and seeing what information we can to further improve the school experience for your children. And as of now, I think we have a neighborhood of like 1,200 responses overall, which is great, but we would love to see hundreds more by the June 1st deadline. I believe Krista may be sending out an email out to all parents and families. So if you haven't responded yet, look out for that and take advantage of this opportunity. Give us some feedback. Moving on to the curriculum and technology report, Ron.
Yes, I'm gonna ask Dr. Abmont to summarize, especially, number one, the tuition waivers and why that is very important for Wissahicken High School. Wissahicken School District, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Stoloff. So yes, the first item is the approval of the 2018-19 tuition waived students. Our district allows for a short, a few number of days for a family if they are in moving from our district out to another district. We give them a short period of time to make that transition smooth, which is a tuition waived period of time. That's according to board policy. And we list those students annually for the benefit of the community to know where that is done. These are typically less than 30 days, unless it is a student who is a high school senior, in which case they're permitted to continue their year for the balance of the year tuition-free.
Excuse me. Is that a unique policy of the Wissahicken School District? Or is it relatively common in this area?
I would say that the senior option is a very, very generous one on the part of the board policy, enabling students to remain with us for their senior year if they've gone through Wissahicken and been here through the end of their junior year and do move. It's a very generous opportunity. The other 30-day waived period, that is also pretty typical of other districts in the area. Allow for some smooth transition time for families. In addition to that, we also have the anticipated summer extended school year services provided that we're asking for approval of. We have a technology purchase of Telview Cable Channel Video System from Troxel, which basically enables the continuing of the video scheduling of our meetings and having be produced in coordination with Verizon and Comcast. This is the technology, as well as the applications, to make that all possible. We are updating the system, which is probably about seven years old now and needs to be updated. And finally, we have just an addition, which I mentioned in our last meeting, of the instructional resources to support applied arts and mathematics. This particular one relates to the AP Research Seminar and material specifically for that. Those are the items for the curriculum and technology.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions about those items? Facilities and Transportation Committee, Tracy. And she is not here tonight. But we'll move on to the Finance Committee. David.
Thank you, Joe. The Finance Committee has no informational items tonight, but we do have a number of voting items for next week, 13 of them all together. I'm gonna ask Mr. Coleman if he would please summarize the...
Thank you. The first two items are related to the enrollment increases that we've had in our answer to them, which are laid out as a new all-purpose room, gym, cafeteria, kitchen, stage at Stony Creek, along with three new autistic support classrooms, the conversion of the old gym and cafeteria to classrooms, and the development of an option for approximately three additional new classrooms to be created if monitored enrollment indicates the need. So that is the first item. And to work with Breslin Dewey... So that is the first item, and to work with Breslin, Dewey, and the administration to create that option. The second item is the actual authorization of the contracts for Breslin and Dewey. We are currently working with the two entities, Breslin and Dewey, along with Fox Rothschild, to create contracts. The contracts that are in the board documents are draft. We've received the comments and we're working through last wording changes. We believe that they will be completed by Thursday, in which case we'll have final documents in there. If they are not final documents, we will change the wording in this to be pending final business administrator review. Truthfully, we're down to a couple of things, and I'm hopeful that will be done by then. Next several items are our annual bids. We bid as many things as possible in this timeframe so that we can award those bids, and the material arrives over the summers to be ready for the school year. And we bid virtually anything that we can aggregate and get competitive bidding on, and those items are listed in three and four. Five is we needed additional science curriculum material as part of the curriculum review, which occurred last year. We needed additional material, and we bid that, and those are the items in item number five. Annually, we approve certain other contracts, including the athletic training services contract, the insurance, which is number seven. We're happy to have a small decrease in the cost for insurance this year. The Monco general operating budget is provided in number eight. The number nine is annually, we do a general fund transfer to capital reserve, and we're pleased with some of the good news that we've had this year to have $3.4 million to be able to transfer. Number 10 is by board policy. We provide a sort of template to the board and to the public as to what we think we're going to have in the way of commitment of fund balances, and that is provided in number 10. Number 11 is the approval of the financial reports. 12 is the list of payments. And 12 is authorizing Breslin and Dewey to help authorize, to help the administration designate a company to do $25,000 worth of subsurface and site stormwater investigation, and that's pretty much only going to be needed if the approvals are approved in numbers one and two. 13 essentially would allow us, over the summer, to do a bunch of testing at the Stony Creek site to make sure that wherever we're planning to do things, that the soil and the various water leaching is going to be proper.
Excuse me, before you go on, a question about the conversion of the lunchroom in Stony Creek into classrooms. Has any thought been done as to what going to do with the height of that space?
So, thank you for the question. So the next phase would be, you know, the architect working with the administration and some of the folk that might be considered to move into those spaces. And, you know, many schools have significant ceilings above what is a drop ceiling, which would come down and the students would see the drop ceiling. So that's pretty common. You're correct from the standpoint that most of them don't have quite the drop that you would have in a gymnasium. There are other options for those spaces, and they'll be considered as well, but that's really sort of the next phase. Input from board members and/or the public and the various folk that might be moving into there is also going to be solicited and taken into account for the conversion. There had been some public discussion about potentially making it into two stories, and we don't think that that's probably feasible, but again, the architect can kick that around as well.
Thank you.
So, just to make people aware, items one, two, and 13, under the finance grouping, are in essence the representation of the outcome of all the various facilities and capacity planning meetings we've been having over the last like six, eight, nine months. And in essence, what we ended up with is in the neighborhood of a $20 million renovation and expansion of Stony Creek Elementary School to add significant capacity for, what is it, probably in the neighborhood of 130, 150 students? Any more? Okay, 160. So again, in response to the current overcrowding there, as well as the projected enrollment increases that we're planning to see at Stony Creek. Yeah, it's kind of hard to like tease it out, but that's essentially what that is. I think in the past, we've had some questions from some board members about the architect contract, so I wanted to see if anyone still had any questions or issues they wanted to discuss regarding that.
I did, you know, I reviewed the information that we received regarding the varying percentages that architectural firms charge, and it seems like the range appears to be from 5% to 7% of project. And so, given the amount of work that we do with this one particular firm, I would like to see the district very hard negotiate a lower percentage with Breslin moving forward, because it sounds like they're working at the higher percentage rate. Lower percentage rate, which is again, in some districts is as low as 5. My understanding is correct?
So, your answer, your comment is correct. The fee structure that we provided, generally, all architects are going to offer lower rates for new construction because it's cleaner and easier, and usually higher and profitable. So when they do full renos, you're going to see higher percentages, and then, you know, the combination of new construction and reno, depending on the split, you're going to probably see it somewhere in between. Generally, I don't disagree with what you said, that the range you said is, you know, between 5 and 7, and I think that is true. And the current proposal that we have from Breslin is 6.5%, which fits in that range.
Any other questions or comments? Dave? You know, I jumped over the facilities section because Tracy's not here, but I didn't realize that Gary's here, Wade are here, so maybe one of you guys can walk us through the voting items for Facilities and Transportation.
Would be happy to, thank you. So, under H1, the first item is we annually piggyback off the MCIU bid for gasoline, diesel, and heating oil, and that is provided, and we have slightly lower prices than last year. We have annual testing and inspections of our fire alarm. That is done in a contract through Johnson Controls overall, although it's listed under Simplex Grenell. Co-Stars pricing for number three for custodial supply bids, we've changed that probably about four or five years ago, and it's been very, very successful for us in helping us to manage our inventory and allowing us to only purchase that which we need when we need it. Number four is a project that we've talked about probably for three years now. We've been working at it slowly to accomplish this project, and it's the Blue Bell Elementary School Walk Run Trail. We accomplished a few of the pieces a few years ago. Like last year, we actually had a break, and then this year, we discussed with the board a major impact item, and then this is sort of the culmination of that. I think if things go well, there actually won't be any net impact from the school district because of the fundraising that has occurred. And Dr. Lupo received a matching grant, which will primarily be the funding for this, although there might be some administration from the district. A $59,370 award, if the board chooses to do so, would extend the walking trail through pretty much the remaining parts of the Blue Bell that we think are probably the A-list items for the walk trail for the students. There are other items that could be created for the walk trail, but that would really probably be less for the students and more for the community. So this is the important part from the student's standpoint. And then the last part is we do have discarding and excess obsolete that we need to provide. Thank you.
Any questions or comments about those items? No? Okay. Before we move on to the Policy Committee, I'm going to give our retiring student board reps an opportunity to say goodbye, adieu. Thank you again for your service and participation over the last two years. Good luck to you guys. Okay, Policy Committee, Carol.
Thank you. The Policy Committee did not meet in May, and we are not planning to meet in June. However, we will be putting forth two voting items. It would be the second and final reading for policy 103, nondiscrimination in schooling classrooms, and policy 810 for transportation. The first reading was at the May 6th meeting, and that's my report. Thank you.
Questions or comments about the items under policy? Okay, then we're going to move on to the report of the Personnel Director, Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. There are no informational items. I would be requesting approval for items on K1, which is a large sheet of items. We'll continue to add to that, and any additions will be in bold for the next meeting. K2 would be approval additions to the volunteer list for those persons who have been identified as able to volunteer for the 1920 school year. K3, approval of appointments for extended school year for the Transportation Department. Number four is approval of the confidential employee salaries for the 2019-2020 school year. And lastly, approval of the compensation and fringe benefit program for the Wissahicken Administrative and Supervisors Association, which we call WASA, which will take effect July 1, 2019.
Okay, any comments or questions? No? Then we're going to move on to the report of the board representatives. Tracy's not here, and next item is MCIU Board of Directors. The MCIU board met last week to conduct its normal monthly business. I think the most significant thing that was discussed was approval of bids, contracts for a major renovation that's going to be happening over the next year or so at their site, their old former headquarters site in Norristown, which will improve and expand the facilities there so they could increase enrollment to Head Start, Early Intervention Programs, as well as consider the possibility of opening, I think, a partial hospitalization service for students with significant and high needs. That is a big project that's just getting started underway. There is at least one interesting legislative item that I got updated on, but I don't want to steal the thunder of Pat or Ron. You guys might have heard about this at the Legislative Committee, so the MCIU Legislative Committee, Pat or Ron?
I do not have a report because I was unable to attend, but perhaps Ron has a report. Yeah.
There are several items that will be discussed at the meeting involving charters, and this is less of a problem with the Wissahicken School District, but it's still, I believe, several hundred thousand dollars. We still, now when you say it's a small item, still end up being drained several hundred thousand dollars a year to support charters. And one of the major problems are the cyber charters. These are basically non-brick-and-mortar schools, but they get as much money as a school that had an edifice that had to be supported. So they have virtually no overhead, but they get the same amount of money as any school that does have an overhead. And one of the problems with cyber charters is, in the state of Pennsylvania, not one cyber charter in the state, we're talking about independent cyber charters, have had acceptable yearly progress, which is an incredible failure on their part. And they're still getting money, and there was an attempt to improve the situation, but most of the bills that are before the state legislature would make it worse rather than better. And one of the items would be that charters could expand outside their districts. And there was a, one of the statements I was told, it is my understanding that for some reason, school superintendents throughout the state are somewhat against this idea. Then there's school enrollment, which is a tremendous program that allows our students to go to the Monco Community College and can save themselves when they get into college, potentially an entire half year or even a year. But what will happen if this is expanded to cyber charters? Well, the work of the, the cost would be hours, but the cyber charter would still be getting the money even though the kids are not being served by the cyber charter. Again, it's another part of the attack on public education and the draining of your tax dollars to pay for services that are not rendered. And the, I request and the other school districts request around the state that you contact your state representatives, that is both the House and the State Senate, to stop this expansion and this giveaway of our tax dollars to people who are not, I would say deserving, but they're not providing the services, that the money that they're getting from us. They are bleeding us, but we do not get the benefit. And we're going to be having another meeting in June, and to continue this effort to try to stop this bleeding of our tax dollars to cyber charters most especially. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. You didn't mention the one that I was thinking of. The one I was thinking of and was most interested in had to do with legislation that I believe just passed one of the chambers of government in Harrisburg to make financial literacy a course that, I can't remember if it's a requirement, but it essentially is going to make that a graduation requirement, I think, for 2021 school year, I believe. It's a couple of years out, but I know that that's been a topic that's been discussed at the board and by some of our predecessors here at the board as important. I personally believe it's an important subject that our kids would really benefit from, not just high school students, but as adults. So I thought that legislation was pretty interesting, because it's coming to fruition.
Right, and then we've been getting our toes wet in that area with, if you'd like to very briefly give a summary of what we're doing with our students, Jim?
Yes, in regard to financial literacy, we do have some non-course activities such as career fairs and actual hypothetical budgeting fairs for the students to undergo. I have a feeling this is going to be a mandate, great, because all these mandates come with full funding, so that'll be awesome when we get more money from the state to implement this new financial course.
Did you just say mandate with funding? Oh.
Then the final one is the North Monco Technical Career Center. Ronnie or David, any updates?
I don't know, David. Getting a new school officer. Yeah, that's all we talked about, and...
Otherwise, I think it was routine business. Nothing new.
Okay. All right, thank you. And now we're getting to the tail end of our agenda. We're at item 16, which is the second public comment period, where we'll hear comments on any school-related topics, and we do have several speakers who have registered this evening. And I'm going to call the first one, Mitchell Harris.
Thanks for having me. I'm Mitchell Harris. I live at 212 Oakmont Drive. I'm in Stony Creek. Happy to report I'm graduating from Stony Creek today in about a week or two. Be moving just to the middle school and the high school. One of the things I'd like to just mention that I'd like to see added to the curriculum, probably in the middle school would be best, would be the requirement of typing as a required course. There are many benefits to being able to touch type versus hunt and peck. Few that jump right out are speed, accuracy, improved focus, actual improved posture and less fatigue. I think there are great life benefits. Taking touch typing was actually one of the best classes I took in high school. We only had typewriters back then. We only had typewriters back then, but I can tell you it was a tremendous advantage in college, in the workforce. It's very frustrating watching my kids just kind of hunt and peck. We obviously have a big technology commitment in the district. All kids get laptops starting in middle school that they carry all the way through high school. Seems to me that it would be a great benefit. I can only speak to my child and several of her friends that have had tech ed in the middle school. Frankly, they're less than impressed with what they've learned in tech ed. I think Mr. Abimont mentioned earlier about trying to teach to the 21st century and having our teachers learn how to approach students. Just looking at several board members here that are using laptops to take notes. I know we spent a tremendous amount of time in the elementary schools teaching kids how to print and how to write cursive. Yet, when you get into college and out in the real world, most everybody at corporate meetings have laptops in front of them, and they take notes by typing. Much better to take notes typing while you're looking at the person or at the slides up on the board rather than looking down at the keys. Again, that comes back to focus. I think we, would be interesting, if possible, maybe do a pilot program this fall with one of the tech ed classes or several, whereby maybe you could add typing studies that I've read, say, just 10 to 20 minutes a day of practice would sort of get the job done. It seems to me that that would be something fairly easy to implement at the middle school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, we have Robert Quinn Hall.
Hello. My name is Robert Quinn Hall. I live at 301 East Butler Avenue in Ambler, Pennsylvania, in the Ambler Borough. I'm also a parent of two children attending elementary school here in the Wissahican School District, one of whom has Down Syndrome and an IEP. I understand that this board is going to vote next week on a proposal to close the three autism support classrooms at Shady Grove and borrow funds to rebuild three new autism support classrooms at Stony Creek to help address the capacity challenges. I think it's finance one and the one and two we talked on plenty. I would like to offer a perspective from my experience. The existence of these classrooms segregates students with special needs. It also puts us at risk of entrenching specific methodologies and poses potential hidden costs for the district beyond just the cost of building and staffing those rooms. Federal law says school districts are supposed to make significant efforts to support children with special needs so that they can access the general education curriculum alongside their non-disabled peers. That's because a lot of research, hundreds of studies over the past 40 years, show students have the best long-term outcomes when they're included with the supports and services they need instead of segregated for special ed. Research also suggests that all students reap emotional and academic benefit from classrooms that expose them to a diverse range of capabilities. Options like separate classrooms and alternative curricula are supposed to come into play only when the school and parents together as a team decide that it is necessary for an individual child. Last fall, at the same time the third autism support classroom opened at Shady Grove Elementary, Wissahican placed a number of students who had been successfully learning in general education settings into autism support instead. This spring, multiple rulings found that Wissahican had violated the students' civil rights by pressing for autism support without first fully considering the supports and services that could help them access general ed curriculum in their neighborhood schools. I have come to believe that the existence of separate classrooms creates an operational environment or groupthink that consciously or subconsciously seeks to justify that investment. Empty classrooms beg to be filled, and our administrators will feel even more pressure to fight families that want less restrictive options for their children. This unfortunately works against collaborative inclusive planning between families and staff for individual students. Before you vote next week, I'm asking you, in your oversight capacity, to ask more questions about the choices we're making through these investments. Do you know for certain that three autism support elementary classrooms is the right number for our five-to-10-year projections? I'm not aware if that was included in our independent demographic studies. Meanwhile, add up the amount of money Wissahican School District spends every year in settlements and lawsuits defending narrow special education practices in addition to operating and staffing costs for these classrooms. It's possible that augmenting inclusive support for students with disabilities in their neighborhood schools is actually more economical than investing in so many separate autism support classrooms and their resulting consequential costs. There are a lot of inclusion resources Wissahican could be taking advantage of from the Include Me From the Start program to professional and parent teachings trainings from a number of local and state organizations, such as the PEAC Center, the Ark of Pennsylvania, and the MCIU. Wissahican, its students and families could be better served by using our resources to develop more inclusive supports for our students with special needs. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm sorry, I ran a little over.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anisa Rhines.
Hi, my name is Anisa Rhines. I lived in Wissahican School District for a year and a half now. My son attends Wissahican Middle School. He's in sixth grade. And I just wanted to get your definition of a school threat. What's the definition of a school threat? Can you tell me? Definition of a threat?
You have the opportunity to make public comment, but it's not our practice to engage in a backdoor dialogue.
Okay, so I looked it up. A person or a thing likely to cause a damage or danger or other hostile actions. So a threat was made April 24th at the Wissahican Middle School. And my son was in altercation with another boy. On this day, I did not, the school did not aware me that a threat was made. And I called the school and I talked to the principal, and she tried to sweep it underneath the rugs, stating that none of this occurred, none of this happened, and a threat was not made. When I left the school board meeting, the last one that you guys had, you guys said that we do not take threats. We take threats seriously. And I was aware that my son told me, well, actually told my father that day that this little boy threatened the school, Wissahican Middle School, by a text message, well, Snapchat. So after I left the meeting here, I want to make the police aware. And they informed me that they were already aware that the school actually made a report, but the school did not tell me any of this stuff was going on regarding my son. So what needs to say? This little boy that attends Wissahican Middle School, he just started going to the school a couple of months ago. He actually, I found out that he got expelled from Shawham School District to a prior investigation that was going on. I actually talked to the superintendent about two weeks ago, and I asked him, can I have a meeting with him? And he...
If I may, it isn't our practice, and for that matter, any school district's practice, to discuss individual student disciplinary or factual circumstances in the context of a public meeting. You're really looking for an answer. We can't give an answer at a public meeting regarding your son's situation because that would violate the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. So you can...
Well, actually, I wanted to talk to, actually, I asked the superintendent to give me a policy about the advocacy because I wanted the NAACP to be an advocate for me and my son.
But the issue is whether they're an advocate. This has nothing to do with advocacy on behalf of your son's situation. This has everything to do with what we can do at tonight's public meeting.
Well, I wanted to make it clear and make it aware that the parents should actually know what's going on because a parent made a police report as well and didn't know what was going on because her son did not want to attend school. So it was not aware, none of the parents knew about this. And I wanted to make it clear today and what you guys thought about the threat issue about what happened regarding my son did not want to go to school.
We can't discuss that publicly. First of all, we don't, excuse me. Excuse me, this is not the appropriate forum.
Well, what is the appropriate forum? Because I asked the superintendent, can he meet with me? I said, can I show you the police reports? Can we go over the police reports together and sit down and have a meeting? He told me that's not necessary. Why? What would happen if this was your kid?
I think you're going to have to address that directly with the superintendent.
Well, I tried. So what's the next step?
You can address it with the superintendent.
He doesn't want to meet with me, so what's the next step?
It is my understanding that the nature of the conditions of the meeting were at issue, not meeting with you directly.
No, I wanted to meet with him. I wanted to meet with him to sit down so we can talk about this because this little kid should not be at school. Period. If you want to, if you want to bring, if you're threatening to bring a gun to school, you should not be at school, right?
All I'm saying is that perhaps I would be glad to talk with you and the superintendent following this meeting, but we can't do it in the context of this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Diane Burgess.
Good evening. I'm Diane Burgess. I live at 314 Railroad Avenue. And I'm a taxpayer. In February, I attended a meeting with a parent that had a child in an honors class that had been given a detention because of a problem with an aide. I didn't understand, I don't understand having an aide in an honors classroom, but we don't have an aide to assist an autistic child for the autistic children for coding class. The principal and counselor were at the meeting, but the parent wanted the teacher and the aide there because she stated that her child was the only black in the class and that she felt like the aide was discriminating against her. The principal stated that she would not allow the parent to meet with the teacher. I immediately emailed Dr. Crasfield asking if there was a policy or something that I didn't know about, stating that parents can't meet with their teachers, their children's teachers. I also emailed one of the board members, spoke to one of them personally, and he said it was not a board issue. So I'm asking tonight that the Policy Committee for the Board makes a decision because we're taxpayers. Teachers, administrators, all of you are accountable to us. The Board is accountable to us as the voters. And for teachers to be allowed, principals to be allowed to say that a parent can't speak to a teacher, I want some immediate action on this. I also understand that we would no longer be able to have advocates in the district. You know, somebody said that, you know, if you bring NAACP in there, you have to bring some other crazy terroristic groups in there. That's not true. We don't have any black administrators in this district. We have very few black teachers in this district. And can you imagine how intimidating it is for a parent to walk into a meeting with the team there? And she's the only black, and they're all white, but she can't have an advocate. I would really like some decisions to be made as soon as possible. And I know you all have my information. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Neil Rhines.
Good evening. I'm here to specifically address the achievement gap problem at Wissahican, which you guys know is very, very dismal. I just want to address like 10 ways to address the achievement gap. Because when I looked at the achievement gap plan, it's called an attack plan. It's not an action plan. It's an attack plan, which everybody knows to attack is a different type of address than when you're dealing with an action plan. So the 10 ways would be to develop and implement an individual action plan for students that are falling behind in reading and math. This is an A-plus school district, ranked number 12 in the state of Pennsylvania. It's ranked number 12. And it has a 95, 97% math aptitude and 91% in reading. So there's no way in the world that children, that Black and Hispanic children, African-Americans in particular, there shouldn't be any achievement gap issue. So as early as kindergarten, a readiness program should be developed for these children. We need to create a climate in the classroom of high expectations. When you set the bar low, you have low expectations. You can see even on a national level that the bar has been set low and we have low expectations. And I guess you guys know who I'm referring to. We need to place students in enrichment classes to strengthen student performance in reading and in math. As Ms. Diane stated, hiring minority teachers and student teachers should be a high priority. Students perform better when they see people that look like they look. You know, I went to a segregated elementary school from first to fourth grade in the Glen Side area, and my teachers looked like me. They were very encouraging. If we were falling behind or whatever, they gave our parents a call. So it was more parent and teacher involvement than I went to an integrated elementary school. So I understand the difference in being from an all African-American teaching environment and going into a predominantly white environment. And I went to one of the neighboring high schools that's one of your neighbors, close neighbors. Teacher expectations has a significant impact on student achievement. Conversely, lower teacher expectations result in significant achievement gaps amongst minority students. We need to provide academically multicultural curriculums. Teachers should encourage those at high risk to read during their leisure time. The lack of learning opportunities during the summer time has a strong and negative effect on the progress of minority students. Community groups, churches, nonprofit groups should develop and implement supplementary after-school and weekend programs during the summer months, which will aid the students with starting the school year off with a solid ground and on the right footing. The development of mentorship programs for students at risk. The school is surrounded by colleges. Lower Gwinnett's here, Montgomery County Community, the school, the Temple. The school is Chestnut Hill. So it's no excuse that this so-called achievement gap is even a reality in the school district. With this school district being at an A-plus rating, how can we expect our upper, I mean, some students, let's face it, some students are not going...
Mr. Rhines, it's been over four minutes. Can you please wrap up your comments?
Okay, okay, okay. We need to involve high school students who are at risk in community activities and volunteer services, provide social service referrals for those at risk, i.e. behavioral health, medical. Some people need food, some people need clothing. So food banks can be set up at some of the schools for students that do need food. Clothing banks can be set up in some of the local schools to help and aid children. Strengthen teacher training and competency testing. Parents have to play a stronger role with helping their children succeed. And too often, students of color and those students who face challenging circumstances are held to lower standards simply because of how they look or where they come from. Thank you much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bernard Gordon.
Good evening. My name is Bernard Gordon. I live at 32 West Basin Street in Norristown. But I'm a graduate, 1979, in West Hickon. Very proud of that. I want to talk about the Hall of Fame. Now, I can only speak for myself. I can't wait to speak for too many other folks, but they're probably in the same position as I. I was a three-sport person. I did football, basketball, and track, but I really excelled in basketball. As a matter of fact, I was the first sophomore to start varsity basketball in West Hickon. First one. And I was... My senior year, I was first team all Bucksmaw. It was Bucksmaw back then, wasn't suburban, whatever you guys got now. I was first team all Bucksmaw, first team all-area, and honorable mention All-American back in 1979. My question is with the Hall of Fame is I don't really know how you inject folk into the wall. I don't know the system. I would love to know the system, the criteria. What makes that person get on that wall? Like I said, a lot of people in my position. I'm pretty sure Paul, I think he graduated '82, '83, '84, somewhere around there, I think. So he kind of knows me. He was a sophomore when I was a senior or a freshman when I was a senior. I do remember him. So, I mean, that's my only question I have. I just want to know the criteria of how somebody makes it to that wall. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Carmina Taylor.
Good evening. I'm here as an alum. In 2013, I presented the revival of the Hall of Fame as well as Alumni Association. In 2016, I was involved in the initial revamping of it again during the 50th anniversary. And recently, I checked the website and according to the website, from 1895 to 2012, there's been 128 alumni from West Hickon inducted. 89 are white, 36 are black, 22 alumni are black women, 14 alumni are black men. Of the black men that are inducted, that are athletes, there's only three. Four, three, three. So Mr. Larry Wilson from the class of 1953, Steve Griffin from the class of 1982, and Tano, who graduated with my son in 2012. I have, when I was doing my research, I ran into a man that I thought was an athlete, and he wasn't. And I brought him here tonight. Mr. Johnson, could you please stand up? He's one of the 14 blacks of the... Did he graduate in 1960 or '63? 1960, right. So the point is, is that I have... And my mother actually was inducted in the Sports Hall of Fame in 1991. And there's a great disparity in how we have inducted athletes in this Alumni Hall of Fame. There are no athletes of color from the 1960s, the '70s, one from the '80s, and none from the '90s. They contributed to this athletic program in all those decades. And I think that we need to really look at these numbers. I think, as Bernie said, we have to look at the criteria. Because when my mother was inducted into the Hall of Fame, there was a Sports Hall of Fame and a regular Alumni Hall of Fame. And the Sports Hall of Fame was basically your records in high school. So the black men in the '70s, '80s, and '90s and the '60s, forgive me, all have records that have not been broken in this school district since they graduated. And I think it's high time that we really look at including alumni on the committee that do not work for the district, that can offer historical context, that can offer wisdom and experience. I think that we need to engage with alumni to find out why and what these people did to our school. Just like Mr. Rhines was saying, if we want our black kids to succeed or our children of color to succeed at West Hickon, they need to see and emulate the history and the people that came before them. To honor black men that haven't been inducted into the Hall of Fame would give those kids in middle school something to look up to, something to work at when they're in high school. These are the facts. And I really hope that you guys will take what I'm saying and really look at righting the wrongs because that's what we're really, I'm asking you to do. I came back and invested in this school community because I, as a pregnant young mother, when I saw my mother inducted into the Hall of Fame, it gave me so much pride. And that pride that I felt in 1991 has carried me all the way until this year, every year. And knowing the black athletes that have come from Penland and Ambler that made this program, they deserve to be honored. A lot of them could not come tonight. And until we get this address, we'll keep coming back and bringing this up because it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. So several questions and issues were raised by the various speakers tonight. And I'm going to ask the administration to investigate and post responses on the district's website after they get more information, as is our normal practice. Okay, with that, we are on to board comments. Any comments from my fellow board members? Nope? Okay, then I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Meeting adjourned.